Steve Summerville, 15-2017, this is our regular meeting for the month. Steve Summerville, I apologize if you guys sound funny. I am dialing the overcoming of a silence code, so please bear with me if I don't sound too pleasant to you. Again, we welcome you to this monthly meeting. This time, we will have the pleasure of leading by our kind of management.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the midst of the difficulty and justice for all.
Steve, we will have the invocation, and I'm going to ask, Mr. Chalk Table, would you do the invocation for us?
Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, we come to you, Lord, we just thank you for all who gather here today to conduct the county business and to listen. Lord, we just ask you to be with each and every one of them, help them make the right decisions. Lord, may we do everything that pleases you, in Jesus's name we pray.
Pull right along with the outline of the agenda, on the time we need a motion to approve the agenda as it stands. I'd like to mention what could be done in a second. In any further discussions, all in favor, get in the polls. Number four on the agenda, approved minutes, 11-7-17 was a call meeting, number 15 was a regular meeting, number 17-17 was a call meeting, and 12-17 was a call meeting, just time out any motion to approve the minutes.
I can motion for a further discussion.
In a second. All right, in any further discussion, all in favor. So we got a public hearing from five...
No one is...
Five A in darkness to a meeting and agreement for the government of the Georgia County Industrial Building, 2016, part of Dillon, Marlboro County, so as to a larger part, project bio.
Mr. Chairman, that's, let's see, this project bio, I think we'll have third reading on that in another section. Our economic development, Tony, will update on as to where we're at with that, but again, that's just to make it a multi-county department, 1% going to Marlboro County.
Senior information, it's time, move right along, five B in darkness to provide budget appropriation, county purposes to county of Dillon for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 27, beginning July 3rd, 28, and to adopt a limit rates and fees and other tax purposes and county appropriation purposes, and to establish the tax measures to provide within the budget.
Enough other comments, we can talk about it extensively.
Also, we receive that information. On six, on the new business, eight, park head employee will report.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, if you had for the test, I know you're sick, I'm sick too, but we always recognize two of our employees, Floyd and Martin. I'm wonderful in Martin, but perfect in office, Lisa, are you here?
She's here.
You ain't got a gun, it's $60, you really got a gun.
She don't want a box, he's like...
We appreciate everything that we're doing, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you did for us.
Thank you.
And as department head, I was the only one to vote against this, he does not deserve it, he doesn't do much of anything around here, so Richard Gadd, will you come on up? This guy, he answers, you know, whatever we ask him to do, he does, he's a wealth of knowledge, seems to know a little bit about everything, and Richard, we're so grateful for all that you do.
Now, thank you, Richard.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, boss.
Well, I appreciate it, this is our appreciation.
All right, move right along, get the agenda, six, new business, six B, regulation question.
Okay, we have one from the Dillon Herald, and they are requesting a donation of any amount for the Dillon Herald and East Dillon Baptist Church annual toy and food drive. Drive benefits the residents of Dillon County only, so, do I hear?
I'd like to give $200 to them.
$45.
I'll write it up.
Guess I got it.
You got it.
It's not drawing me.
Okay, and then we have one, this was to James Hamble, to help the children of 11 and 12 All-Star Football Team with the purchase of their trophies. The trophies were ordered for 11 and 12 team because they are the district champs. It was $216.
Yep.
And the other one I have is from the Criterion Club. This letter comes as a request for donation to the Criterion Club in the Dillon, South Carolina area.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Chairman, you gonna give all that to your request? You don't want to help them that?
Yeah.
I have that to be here. I think those kids, they deserve, you know, they win, they win their state championship.
They can beat them, I'd say we give some of their pride.
They deserve, so we have to... But she didn't call me, she didn't know who to go to, I just told them, we make sure they get paid for... They ain't got a coach today, if you hold a little bit of... Mr. Washington, you hit that team?
That, uh, that was 11 and 12.
11 and 12?
Yeah.
Proud of those kids, and we do everything we can for them. You took care, you were getting them, Mr. Washington?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was gonna pay the whole thing with that, but I think you fit that, we're gonna give a hundred, and I'm gonna pay you a hundred, whatever you pay me.
Eighty on the one part.
Come out for you, Mr. Chairman, that's...
I'm up. Can I give you a fifty for them?
Oh, look.
Look, you can make money off of this deal.
Sounds like a six-way split. I think the message that we want to send out, you know, with this is that we are proud of one of our kids, and we want them to know that they certainly have our support. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, and now we're back to the Criterion Club. The purpose of this letter at this time is to bring Christmas cheer to some of the families in the community, we appreciate your continued support. We will begin our spirit of giving on Wednesday, December the sixth, with a prayer for the community, and will continue throughout the month. The donation from the county council will help us to revitalize our activities.
I'll give $25. I thought I was gonna give $200.
Okay, that's all I have right now.
All right, thank you, God, for the regulation question, this time we need a motion to approve the regulations.
I made a motion.
In a second. All right, in any further discussion, all in favor? All right, move right along, the agenda next, will be C, six C, Mr. Ronnie Crawford, Dillon addition there.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right, I think it's been about four months, we started with the demolition of houses, building old buildings, and out of that time, we've got my trailer going down, and a house. All of a sudden, we can't find the equipment, well Newtown can't find it nowhere. We started this thing off, every time, you know, every time, we try and start to do something out, we want to do something in Newtown, if we get a nod, good, but then all of a sudden, that backing off from us. I don't know where the equipment is, I'm trying to find out why, it takes four months, we did two houses, all right, okay, you got other people, yeah, but four months? Four months, and all we have torn down is two houses. One, we got the stuff, got the paperwork done, we get the house torn down, but what is holding this up? I'm asking anybody up there to give me an answer.
I don't necessarily, Mr. Crawford, feel that this is a holdup, I think when we first adopted this, it was usually friendly, not giving you an excuse, but trying to give you a reason why county has other things to do, and when it's available, I think I'm on the right track, though, Mr. Administrator, when it's feasible for the county to turn out these houses, the county does, but please understand that the county just can't turn out houses in the day, they have other functions and other job duties that they have to do, I mean, we do it all we can, you know, to the community, or please, you know, please understand that there was a time where we didn't have this, but now we're able to, you know, to turn out some houses, and those houses will be turned out when the county can get to it, I mean, the county has so much other things to do, they got roads to bridge, they got roads, they got a plot, you know, they picking up stuff off the rideaway and things of that sort, and we only have so much manpower, you know, I think that would be the answer to your question, man, and we're not...
I still have to mind.
Well, you may, I understand that you may not accept it, but I'm giving you a reason, a logical reason, that I feel as to why things are not done as quick as you would like to do them up there.
It's not, it's not, it's me...
But listen to this, Mr. Crawford, we are making progress in that area, I mean, you gotta say we're making progress, there was a time when we were not doing any of that, so I think progress has been made, and again, we don't have so much manpower, and we gotta be doing everything we can, they just can't leave all they duties and just focus on one thing, I mean, we're trying to work together with the community, and we respectfully, we respectfully ask the community to please work on with us.
And that's what we've done there too, for four months, and every time I'd ask about it, I get no answer, or somebody else is using, it's their turn, but when they first start out, nobody had anything to do with it.
And I understand what you're saying...
And every time we start, it gets taken away again, and it's, it's, it's every time, and I said this years ago, everything stops at one highway.
But please understand, though, Mr. Crawford, Dillon County is a large area, there's seven districts that's up here, and we have to serve everybody in this county, it wouldn't be fair, so all the type of people in this county, if we just start and focus on one area, we're trying to get around to everybody, I have the same complaint in District Three, there are some houses that they won't, you know, it's spoken of, and we're gonna try to get around to it.
Well, they should have come up there and asked about it, like we did.
That's what I understand, and...
And the time we start, I can't do it, the time, the equipment disappears, everybody has got something to do with it.
But you would...
But we pay taxes just like anybody is.
Yes, sir, you do, and everybody do, not you.
I'd like to see something.
Right, but we started with you, we started...
That's it, two people, a trailer, a...
But how do you think those fields that we haven't even started...
They should have come up here and asked for theirs, too.
Yes, sir, but that don't, one person can't take home a shoot too, sir.
I, I, well, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm by myself, and I don't mind that.
And you're doing the right thing.
But what I'm saying is, it always happens, every time somebody says something about Newtown, it dies out, that ain't right, I graduated in 68, and it's been the same thing.
But progress has been made, and that's what...
Not my book.
And I hope you can understand, and I think there are citizens in Newtown today that would beg the difference, I think they would say that progress has been made, and progress is being made, but again, everybody in this county is taxpayer, we have a lot of people to try to satisfy, and we just can't get around anybody when they want us to, and we may not get there when you want us, but we'll be on time, and we'll get there and get it done, if you continue to be patient with us, but...
I can answer the question, why is it always in Newtown?
Sir, I don't think nobody just forced Newtown out, because Newtown...
I had Lucas round one.
Newtown was the first one to add this demolition, this, I don't think nobody just got up one morning and said, "Look, we will just circle Newtown out," that's not our demeanor, that's not the county's demeanor, we have worked in Newtown, and we gotta work all across the county, and that's the best thing I can say to you, and I think you got people...
But I'm not arguing with you.
Yes, sir.
This has been going on since I was a teenager.
But things have changed.
And I'm trying, I'm trying my best to be patient.
I understand, but we can't live in the past, and...
I'm not trying to live in the past, I'm talking about right now.
And doing what you did has made a great impact, and things are being done, and things will continue to be done, and we appreciate what you did, we appreciate you coming, and with you coming to help us spread here, this demolition, but again, we have to get around to everybody in the county, and I...
I wanted to get this off my chest for next year, 'cause I ain't, I ain't going to the next year with this on my mind.
We thank you for coming, we appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
What we got next? All right, moving right along, on the six D, we got station nine, first extraction duty.
Mr. Chairman, I, part of our accountability process when we hired Moses Hayward, is to just simply not pay for any item that comes up, but for Moses to do his due diligence in whether or not we need such equipment, so this time Moses will give you.
Mrs. Chairman, I'm here this afternoon to ask permission from the council to purchase a Hurst extrication tube, it's a 2015 set of tube from Palmetto Rule Fight Department, a fire station nine in Oak Grove, I have a record here if you all want it, they answered 83 rec calls last year in 2016, from December of 2017, so they're going out to a lot of recs, and the piece of equipment they have is 30 years old, and it will not cut these new vehicles, so if somebody gets trapped in a new vehicle, anybody, they're not gonna be able to get them out if they go out there, so they, they have a relationship with Palmetto Rule Fight Department for a person, piece of tube which is two years old, it's been rebuilt by Hurst, and they want to purchase it, $6,000. They have the money available on their budget line, but I want you to stick it, and we end up having to come full consensus, it's over $5,000 spent.
That's your rescue squad out there, bro.
This Oak Grove Fire Department is the only fire department in the county that answers rec calls, and they answered 83 last year in their district alone.
Mr. Gadd, you said they got the money in the budget?
Well, they got $4,000 non-capital, the other $2,000 will have to kind of cut from the supplies, or what we can cut if that...
You got the money in the budget to get it.
You did a motion.
We need a motion, we gotta take a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion against Oak Grove, 2015, Hurst, two.
Okay, we got a motion, do we get a second?
I'll say it.
All right, we got a motion and a second, in any further discussions? All in favor? Get in the poll. Thank you, Mr. Hayward.
Thank you all.
All right, moving right along, on the six E, Nisa, Jeff McKay, presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to let them up and introduce our friend Jeff McKay, a stranger to any of you, Nisa's a valued partner, so she'll make that introduction, and you can count on Jeff to be brief.
You know, today's a happy day, we helping Oak Grove Fire Department, thank you, and since I'm from Oak Grove, rarely would I have the opportunity to say this, but in my lifetime, I was there when they started Harbor Freight in 2001, it was a soybean field. Now, you've got 43 and a half acres of concrete, that's the size of a farm, and we up there now with the food boys, and it's due to folks like Jeff McKay of Nisa, he's been with Nisa for 12 years, and he's highly respected in North and South Carolina, and we're happy to have him here today, and he will just give you an overview of Nisa, he doesn't know I'm gonna say this, but I, somebody needs to tell you all this, but you've got this new thing called inland port, so, let me just tell you what happened, the fellow came down from the ports authority, and Jeff took him riding around, and guess where Jeff brought him, to Dillon County, and now you've got an inland port, he won't tell you that, but I can tell you that, so Jeff, come on and lay it on the line to these folks.
Ms. Lynn is a wonderful member of our board, too, so thank y'all for appointing her, and she is, we really appreciate her.
Thanks, sir.
I promised the Administrator I would be brief, and those of you that know me know I like to keep my promises, so I am gonna, I am trying to go through this, this information very quickly. Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and more importantly, I appreciate what y'all do on a daily basis to make this area and this region a competitive place to do business. 12 years ago, when I came to this region, I was told that Nisa's first and foremost responsibility is to promote collaboration among the counties, and I'm proud as punch that today was probably the best example of collaboration in this region than any of us could ever imagine. When you have three counties that come together, do an industrial part, and can celebrate that effort by announcing $80 million in new investment, 500-plus jobs, that's a hard day to be, ladies and gentlemen, there's a lot of places in this state that give their eye teeth to be in your shoes, and I applaud you, I commend you for that, and what you're doing to promote this business climate and bring these companies in, not only impacts Dillon County, it impacts this entire region, and it makes a difference in people's lives, so I thank you for that. The package I give you, each year, about January, we release our annual report, and it has all the numbers and the things that we've done in the region as a team and as a unit, shows where we stand, where our dollars that we raise are spent, and the results of those dollars. That report is not complete yet, but a lot of what is gonna be in that report is in the information that you see in front of you, we went ahead and compiled the year-end numbers so you can see kind of where we are, where we're headed, and I think you'll notice in there that to date, this region has announced $858 million in new industrial investment. As I said, I've been here 12 years, I can't remember another year that we've had that kind of investment in the region. We've also announced across the region 2,583 new jobs, once again, I think that's, that puts us right up there in one of the top years we had. What that tells me is, people are finding out where we are, who we are, and what we have to offer. Our job at Nisa is to work with Tony and Administrator, and I'll tell you, it's a pleasure to work with them on a daily basis, to ensure that those folks that are out there that can make decisions on where to put industry or investment opportunities, they give, all we ask for is a chance to compete, and if they give us a chance to compete, we win. We are a value proposition across the state, we always hear about Greenville, Charleston, well, our people are hearing about the Nisa region, they're hearing about Dillon County. And I'm gonna, I think, once again, point to your package, you'll notice in your package there's a couple of articles in there, now, these are national publications that have picked up stories, some we've participated with ads on them, but others are national trade magazines that have picked up the fact that, you know, an inland port, a new logistics opportunity, that we're calling the state's newest and best logistics opportunity, is now ready for business, that adds another advantage to us in this region for those folks that are looking to make investment opportunities and create jobs. 2017 was a great year, or is a good year, I think 2018 is shaping up to be an even better year, when we get that kind of publication, or that kind of notification, and, you know, variety on something we're doing here, companies and corporate executives take notice of that. We are one of the few places left in the state where we can say, if you have a substantial number of employees you're looking to hire, we can fill those roles for you, some areas in the state can't do that, they're down around, you know, 3% unemployment right now, companies, they get concerned when they see that low unemployment. We're getting down there, but we still have a good pool of people to pull from, and I'll just to give you an example of, I say we still got some to pull from, and I'll tell you a little bit of an impact that's been made, in January 2011, the unemployment rate in Dillon County was 17%, as of September 2017, your unemployment rate's 5.1%. You patting one of you on the back for that, that's a huge, a huge decrease in that, and that means people are going to work here. So, I commit to you that Nisa will continue to do the things that we have in the past, and that has worked with your, your team here in the county, as well as the other folks across the region, we'll continue to work with those allies that we have, with the Department of Commerce, with the State Ports Association, to ensure that they know who we are, what we are, and what we have to offer in the future, and I expect to be back in front of you at the end of 2018 with even better news and talking about bigger opportunities at this stage. Now, that's brief, but hopefully that's what the Administrator asked me to do, be happy to answer any questions, but once again, I just thank you for the opportunities that you give us to market throughout the region, and what it means to the citizens.
Mr. McKay, we'd like to thank you for what a good job you're doing with Nisa, if you hadn't been over there, we'd probably be in trouble with the state, well, I appreciate everything you're doing.
I appreciate that, sir, but I can only, you know, all I do is steer the wheel, y'all are the automobile, and I tell you, y'all give us good tools to work with, and it's making a difference. Thank you, sir.
All right, to the agenda, six F, contractual lines, we're working on removal water line in Harbor Freight.
This is dealing with the water line with Harbor Freight, new Harbor Freight expansion is going, things were in our agreement, we gave the land to them that we'd have that water line relocated, and this contract call is for the removal of that water line that's through there now, we had one, bid through, it's through Clayco, it's on a change order, it was $147,727, and we had another bid from Copperhead Cove Marine, it was $37,568, and we had some grant money to take care of this, probably want to go with the low bid or...
You got one for $147, and one for $37, ain't hard to figure out, is it? All right, motion this time, approved bid for the water line, specify which bid you're gonna get. I make the motion to go with the $37,000 bid, be a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Get in the poll. Thank you, Mr. Gadd. Move right along, six G, approved bid for new road construction at Tri-Carrefour.
Okay, we had the bid opening Friday, we have five bids, this is dealing with the road expansion, if you look through your paperwork, I'll explain, division one is the actual road for expanding Harbor Freight Road to Fairfield, we're responsible, Dillon County will be responsible for that, or Tri-City Committee, division two is the widening of Fairfield Road from the port to this, to the new road, that fall for the state, we handle that, that part of it. Division three is relocation of the water line, the one that we've taken up. Out of five B is D and L site work, the cheapest, at $3,798,506.26 of that, um, we take a million eighty-five thousand out of that, so that's...
I saw something on this next sheet. You ripped it out, maybe you've written something. I got mine, I'll be on the air.
Al's got it. The portion that Dillon, or Tri-County is going to be responsible for will be $2,713,449. Way the, pretty much, how does this handle? Division three will be handled by the Rio Grant. Rio Grant will take care of that. Division two, the state will take care of that one. Uh, division one will be, we got the $2 million rift grant that'll take care of most of that. So the only other costs we have associated with this, the engineering fee, and I haven't gotten a firm figure on that yet.
So when we talk about SSRB that we may have a, remember we realized some savings on buying the land? That can be applied to the road. I've had conversations with Commerce Department about that. So any shortcoming that we may have, we talked about this numerous times, that we may have to do that SSRB, and that's pledging the funds from all three counties. And, you know, we have to be the athlete because we're the host county. However, the funds come from the proceeds of the Tri-County Park.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bids on new roads until it can go to the lowest dollar bid.
Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Yeah. All right, move right along. Number 6H, approve holiday closings schedule. Yes, you have those ready available.
Yeah, y'all should have all these in your packets, um, that tells the 2018 Dillon County Holiday Closing, which will be from January 1st through December 24th, 5th, and 6th of 2018.
Motion to approve the holiday closings schedule this time. I'll make a motion, second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. All right, move right along. 6I, approve the county council regular meeting schedule.
Okay, and you should have this in your packet also, and it just goes from January the 24th through December 12th, um, is the Dillon County Council regular meeting schedule.
I have a motion to approve the county council regular meeting schedule. And a motion is second. All right, motion at a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. I move right along with the sale of the general fund account.
Right now in the general fund account, we have $1,161,274 outstanding accounts payable, Gives us available balance at this point, $754,728. And restricted funds balances now of $1,537,645.
All right, thanks, sir. Number 8, administrative report.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be brief, starting off with historical news. As I, and probably many others did, we did have the Harbor Freight groundbreaking today. Uh, I know you were battling a cold and unable to be there, but we had, just to tell you the snippets of it, we had the governor, of course, we had our local delegation and the top brass from Harbor Freight, we had Marlboro Electric that was there, we had Commerce Department was there, we had, uh, the port folks attended this. So it was well-attended, lots of good news, and just, again, we say this, but I, I don't think we quite realize, I know the general public doesn't, what we're on the brink of here. So just great, great news, and I appreciate y'all for you making that. Uh, B, Marie Colman Band, of course, that was a free concert we had last night, and it was fantastic. If you had the opportunity to go there, I'm sure you enjoyed it. Uh, Stevie introduced the band. What, what'd you think, Steve? Pretty good?
Thought it was pretty good.
Yeah. Had, had a real good crowd. It wasn't full, but, you know, we, you just kind of keep on doing these things, uh, to make it habitual for folks. Care South announcement, uh, that's kind of gone under the radar, but I believe that's the 18th, Jamie Sue, is that right, Monday? So we will, and you're on the program, Mr. Chairman, but we will announce a, a state art facility across from our detention center. So we're dressing up that area on the way to the port. So there'll be quite a few distinguished guests for that. I think it's 1:30, but I'll make sure we get that to you folks. And of course, they will house our D-HA building. Uh, we currently do that across the street, and it's antiquated, and, uh, you know, we won't have to service that building either. So that will realize a little bit of savings in that. NESA event, I'll be gone tomorrow and Friday. Jeff is putting on an event down at the beach where he's bringing in several speakers. So most of the administrators and economic developers will be there. Uh, as you know, I always have my phone with me, so don't hesitate to call me for any reason. I know Jamie Sue doesn't. So please feel free to do that. That's, unless you have any questions, that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, move right along to 9H. Third read, so, so, Delaware Art Department provides insurance itself. I'd like to see $2 million for the new policy series 2018. Dillon County Council is prescribing the farm in detail, search file provided for payment of the bond, this position is 2000, Dillon Art is 14 miles north. Dillon County Council changed the definition of credit guarantee, and other amounts related there, too.
This is our third reading, Mr. Chairman. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this is to take care of the shortfall of anything we might realize on the road. We just heard it should be significantly less, but the cost to, uh, to get those, uh, that amount of money was no less than, then our attorney recommended we, we, we do this amount, right? And we don't have to use it, of course, but this is third reading on this.
Okay, if you want to fair, a little bit closer assessment, now we got the bids in. I think this is really combining our first SSRB and the new one. The balance on the existing SSRB is about $716,000. And if everything holds, sort of bid-wise, we're looking at about another half a million, so we're looking at 1.250, 1.25 million instead of 2 million outstanding SSRB.
Motion this time, pass third read. I make a motion, we'll have a third read. Be the second. Second. Further discussion? All in favor, third read. Move right along to 9D, third read, authorized by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map, Dillon County to rezone and parcel land on its tax map number 041-44-000001. Property owned by Walter and Jack Price, general commercial, rule, location, how we fix 7-10.
Mr. Chairman, these next four items relate to our solar project, and it's just rezoning to accommodate the, uh, the business?
No, true.
Okay, please correct.
But I don't know what that one's for. But they, they, because they're playing a coin from General. Rule. That was motion, the other gentleman.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the, that's the, yeah, they all relate to solar, yeah. For whatever reason, one of them wants to do.
All right, you got a motion here on the C.
I make a motion, we pass third read, item C.
Be the second one. Second. Can you have any further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. Move right along to 9D, third read, authorized by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map, Dillon County to rezone and parcel land on its tax map number 069-00000000. That's usual, but I property owned by Walter and Jack Price, general commercial, rule. Motion, this time, pass third read again. Make a motion. We have a motion is second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. Move right along to 9D, third read, authorized by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map, Dillon County to rezone and parcel land on its tax map number 069-00000000. That's usual, but I property owned by Walter and Jack Price, general commercial, rule. Motion, this time, pass third read again.
And I think Councilman Moody had a question last time, which I called as well. This is, one's going from rural to general commercial, one's, and these next three are going from general commercial to rural. And that is what is required for, for these.
For the solar project, rural.
That's what, we checked into it, that's what we were...
The motion, pass third read. I make a motion, pass third read. Second. Second. Further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. All right, move right along to 9E. Third read, authorized by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map, Dillon County to parcel land on its tax map number 069-00000000. That's 002 property owned by Walter and Jack Price, general commercial, rule. Motion, this time, pass third read again. Make a motion. We have a motion is second. Second, any further discussion? This is about the same that you said, Mark. That's right. All right, all in favor? Get it, Paul. All right, move right along to 9F, third read, authorized by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning map, Dillon County to rezone and parcel land on its tax map number 069-00000000. That's usual, but I property owned by Walter and Jack Price, general commercial, rule. All right, the motion is this time. Pass third read.
Make a motion, we pass the third ring.
Second. Second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. 9G, third read, authorized by budget appropriation for counter-proposings in the county of Dillon for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, ending June the 30th, 2018, and adopting implement rates, fees, and other type purposes, counter appropriation purposes, and to establish the tax ministry to provide for the amended budget. All right, the motion, pass third read.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, with a lot of creativity, a lot of sweat and tears, and as the entire county knows, this, this, in, in, in my opinion, this county council showed a lot of courage of going out and incentivizing things like the inland port. Uh, and because of that, we took $2.4 million out of our general fund for one purpose only, and that's create opportunities for our citizens. So because of that, it's very tight, it's very lean. We will have to stick very tightly to this budget, but, but I commend y'all for doing such a thing, because we all believe the return on investment's gonna be huge. So we, at this time, we're presenting to you the final reading on our, our budget.
This time, we have a motion, pass third read, with amended budget. I make a motion, I'm gonna move right along, second, all right? Any further discussion? All in favor? Get it, Paul. Move right along to 9H, first read, authorized by the VNC, all Dillon County interests in tax map. Um, you know, 04-08-12-003 located on Badbury Street and Lada. The Lada Rescue Squad and other amounts related there, too.
Mr. Chairman, you'll notice in the, in the title, it says all of Dillon County's interest. Um, the reason for that, um, and just so that you'll completely understand what they're asking for. Dillon County, many years ago, deeded the property where the Lada Rescue Building is to the town of Lada. Town of Lada has, holds title of that property now. But it was with the understanding that they were gonna, um, provide that lot of land for the use of Lada Rescue Squad. But there's a reversionary clause in the deed that states that if it's ever, if it ever ceases to be used for Lada Rescue purposes, revert back to Dillon County. Lada Rescue's asked the town to deed their interest in the land to them. They want to hold title to the land, clear of Lada's interest, clear of Dillon County's interest. Uh, Dillon County's interest, again, is a reversionary interest. It only comes back into play if Lada Rescue Squad ceases to exist and doesn't occupy that land. They're asking you to, to, to convey then that reversionary interest so they have clear title to the property. Now, you may not want to do that. You may want to hold that reversionary interest so that if they ever cease to exist or not function as Rescue Squad, the land will go back to Dillon County so that you can do what you want to with it, or use it for some other purpose. I'm just presenting you what they asked, what the Lada Rescue Squad has asked for us to present. Um, my belief is that since this is only first reading, that there's no harm in passing it now, uh, first reading. And then if you want to think about it further, obviously you have a chance for a public hearing and a second and third reading to do. But that, of course, is up to each individual council member to, to decide.
But they want us to deed it back to get them completed, put it up?
Right.
They, they have a reason for that, and they're not, they're not, what I've been told,
they're not gonna borrow any money, because that was the first thing I was concerned about. Um, they just want to own the title to the property so it belongs to Lada Rescue Squad as well. I'm told is the only reason they want to do it.
Question. Do, are you asking for any action here today on this?
We got first reading.
So they'll have somebody come and represent them, why?
This is just to get it, get a first reading out of the way, so we can really get to the, you know, as well as having a second reading in public hearings when we kind of get to the need of issues generally. And that's, um, they'll be glad if you want to.
I make a motion, we have a motion, pass first read, be the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, pass the first read. Get it, Paul. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. Second. Move right along to 9I. Get a motion to table.
I would respectfully ask, so we'll make sure we're compliant and do a little bit more due diligence if we could table that the next meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to table that in the second. Second. All right, motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor, be a table. Get it, Paul. All right, move right along, on the agenda 10, resolution has been amended, resolution to include the changes. Turn, you like to explain the change?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You said a resolution to include, has been amended, you like, you like to change?
Yes, the resolution that's provided in your packet is to assign the options that we currently hold on the 95 Super Park site to Marlboro Development Team. Uh, the assignment that was in your packet has, has been revised to add two sentences in section two. So what you've already seen in your packet, I would, the ones I passed out to you before the meeting, if you'll look at the last two sentences of section two, and it says, assignments are subject to the county's right to acquire a right-of-way and all necessary easements along a proposed road known as Industrial Park Boulevard. The county is authorized to acquire said right-of-way easements without the consent of the company. Some of these assignments may affect land that is, um, that the Industrial Park Boulevard will cross. And we haven't finished acquiring that property yet. There's some problems that have come up with some drainage easements that have to be addressed. And so if we assign this without preserving some right to do that, then we would have to go back through them to get approval to do it. I don't want to do that. So I'm, I'm just taking the step to, to remove that as a concern so that we can pursue those right, right-of-way, the right-of-way and the easements without, without that attached. You'll see that there are 11 options that would be conveyed if you approve that resolution. And they're outlined on the attachment as Exhibit A that I handed, handed you as well. Come on, this. Mr. Chairman, will you allow me to make some commentary on this? Uh, this, the only option that we will not assign because we have a deal in the making is the property jutted up to the inland port, and that's Mr. Coward's land. I, I think we do have a deal. Tony and I have been working, uh, really daily on, on, on that. As it relates to assigning these options, I've consulted with many experts across the state, in fact. And unanimously, they all think that it's a, it's a good idea. It's, it's problematic at times when a county is in the real estate business, and you can imagine the things that arise. I think Marlboro Development Team is, has expertise and are equipped. I think we're on the same page, yes. Uh, I hope I'm not misspeaking, I, I see Bo in the room, but they've made their money off of power. And...
off of power, and power, uh, is highly used by industries. We want jobs, so I think our, the end game aligns, I think, uh, them having the option will be an asset to us. Uh, economic development from the Commerce Department always comes through the county, so I will be the first port contact, but we already enjoy a relationship with the Marlboro Electric, so that will just continue. Uh, so it, it would be my recommendation to, uh, to convey these options, it doesn't affect the landowner whatsoever, they, the option is the option. Uh, so I, I don't see any negatives in moving forward with this, and I've, I've weighed, I've weighed this very carefully, um, and that's solid advice from, from me. Has council conversed enough to, uh?
Mr. Barry, I noticed that most of these were saved two thousand and fifteen, is that when the current options expire?
And I'm, I'm referring to Tony, I think we've got several that run out.
We have several that runs out in about two years. Um, but if you look at, um, for instance, options over at Northeastern Commerce, um, are like fifteen years, but these options, uh, the five-year options, we've got about, about two years, two and a half years left on them. And of course, it'll be up to the landowner whether in the future that they would want to renew the options with anybody, am I correct? Correct. And this doesn't have any kind of automatically renewing. No, when it expires, um, it's at discretion of the landowner to renew the, the land option.
Right. Yeah. And, and you know, the intent is to keep the, the prices down, as we all know, we would be in danger of that in the county, we certainly don't have the money to, to buy those options once they expire, so I, even positives that are not stated, I think, exist with, with the Marlboro Electric and Marlboro Development Team. Mr. Chairman, you feel like it? Is council conversed enough with each other to move on?
I don't have any concerns, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, we, we have, uh, uh, researched it extensively, and, um, this is simply assigning a contractual right, we have an option as a contract right, and we're assigning that right to someone else, which is allowed in the option itself, so if it's the will of the council, I, I don't see any legal issue with it.
Mr. Chairman, I, excuse me, but I would like to add one more important thing, because I value our relationship with every entity that's jumped the cake, says as well, because everybody's crucial in the cog, and Duke Energy is very critical to us as well, but I fully understand from all I talk to, that any area that's serviced, uh, by Duke won't be affected by, uh, say a competitor, so to speak, owns the option of land, so, uh, I've been given that comfort too, and I would say that same thing if the roles were reversed, I wouldn't want Duke taking any of Marlboro Electric's coverage territory simply by owning an option, uh, because I understand that that does not, that, that won't be a factor in anything. We don't need to move it, this time we have a motion.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we pass this resolution.
We're just understanding that they don't have options to be occupied by.
Right, well, they've already removed these, they aren't in here, it's not all of this.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion, second. Second, that council thinking. Any further discussion? All in favor? In that post. Move right along. Okay, eleven, we have an executive session, we stopped judging by that, it's on the project, so if you have an executive session on it, you have to, uh, as you have been ten weeks before, you understand that no actions take place in executive sessions, and there will be no boos or anything like that, and it won't allow us to have an executive session. Talk about certain things, it won't allow us to talk about. Here, we have an executive session, we're keeping out the judgment by the end of the law. So if you guys want to wait outside of the council chamber, turn, the doors be open, you may do it this time. This time we have a motion to go to executive session. I make a motion, be the second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Move right along with the general, out of twelve council comments. Will the council leave the comments at this time?
I, I gotta come, we're having the pig picking in Latah this Friday, and they're gonna start breakfast about six-thirty to nine, then I think dinner's from about eleven-thirty to two, and then the big barbecue at nine starts around five. We want everybody, the friends to come if they would.
Scott? I got one thing I'd like to say. All what we've been through with, up here with this council, the time that we spent here trying to get this budget right so we wouldn't have to raise the taxes and all that kind of stuff, I want all of you to know that not one person in my district that lived in the Lakeview district came to me and complained about us using Lakeview money to save the millies from going up, our taxes from going up. Not one person has come and complained in my district to let the county use the money. And I commend all of you for what we've been through with up here, all this extra time that we've spent up here, and getting the job done without having to raise people's taxes, because if we can do it with what we just went through with, I think we're gonna be able to make it the rest of the way till these big things start coming in. And I just said that to, really commend y'all, because let me tell you, you don't realize the ones of it that showed up, now Harold had to be somewhere, and you, you had to be somewhere, but the five that showed up, including myself, I'm proud of you. The reason for being is, is you didn't have to do that. We got this thing set up that where some idiot councilman can't come in and throw the tax money away like it used to be done. And I commend all of you for it, for doing that, and everyone who was responsible for setting it up that way. So we're fixing to go through the holidays, and I commend all of you here on this table, council, for what you did to keep the taxes, because I remember saying when I was grandstanding that the county taxes would not be raised, and I found out today from a good source that, and I take us responsibility for the school taxes not going up for the first time in, or where it was out of fear of what was done during this thing, whatever, the school taxes did not go up this time. Am I right? Power is to be. Okay, so the people of Dillon County will not get a tax out this time, and I commend every one of you councilmen, and let me tell you something, somebody today told me what a great council we had up here, somebody with some power, some right to it, and I appreciate it more than anybody else. It means so much to me to be able to come up here and sit with you guys and enjoy myself while I'm here, without having to fight my way out of here, and I hope it stays that way in the future. We got a councilman here with a mental problem, so.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Even if I'm going to comment, you're welcome. Anyone, I gather the comments you want to.
No, no, Mr. Chairman, I didn't.
I just want to say I'm glad, you know, and thankful, um, made it to the end of the year, and appreciate you guys who have been served for this year, and, um, I think, again, I do, on Councilman Scott, we've done, I think we've done the best that we could do here, and, um, I think the objective is to do what's right in our country, and I think we have done that, and I think that, um, the best is yet to come, and I really wish all the citizens of Dillon County a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you. This time we have to have a motion to the chairman. I make that motion, be the second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not this week, not a jury. I'm table the chairman.